Glad you were here to testify of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
All right, so a call needing to order, let's start with the roll card with our Secretary of Treasury.
Scott Carwitz, President.
Here.
Wim Pell, Secretary of Treasury, here. Edward J. Warner.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
And Wim Parish.
Present.
We're all here.
All right, we're here, 9:30 AM meeting, happy Hanukkah. Folks out there that are still getting Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah, Scott.
Happy Hanukkah, everyone.
Trustee Warner.
Yes, I have a couple of applications, the first one for Henry Hildreth, 50 Little Neck Road. Shenkak Hills Innocence is the consultant that is representing them. I believe I just seen James Walker walk into the room. Jim, we're discussing Henry Hildreth. Would you like to come up here and present?
Gee, I barely got time to sit down.
No rush.
Okay, this is a project for Henry Hildreth. We have taken this project slow because the Army Corps took a long time to acknowledge the application, but I'm starting to make progress with the Army Corps and with the DEC, so I thought it'd be a good time to talk to the Board of Trustees. Generally with a project like this, we ask the Board of Trustees what they want to do, so that's what we're asking for at this point. You have a 100-foot pier line, this is a little dock, it's in poor shape, it doesn't comply with anything, and the floats sit on the bottom. So what we're trying to do is push the fixed pier catwalk out to the 100-foot pier line, and it's up to the Board of Trustees whether they want to approve a floating dock at the end of the new fixed pier catwalk, or if they want it to end in a drop platform similar to other areas where we don't have two and a half feet of water. I think either one is a fair decision for Henry Hildreth, so we're here to ask, what would the Board of Trustees prefer?
Well, I know this is an existing pier, which has been there for years. The water depth is pretty shallow, or where it is right now, it's extremely shallow. I mean, yeah, it's dry. So probably 100-foot catwalk with a drop-down T on the end of it would be preferable for this board as far as what we'd be asking for. We've asked for that in the past in many situations like this because there is less, there's like only 18 inches of water at low tide at the end of the dock, which is half of what we would be asking for for the, more than half for the floating, the float.
Isn't that, that's what we'd like to do, Ed. They could put a boat out on a mooring. It's Old Fort Pon.
Yes, it's right next to the yacht club, it's actually a couple properties to the north.
I had a phone call from one of my clients that wanted to know when he could dredge Old Fort Pon. I said, I don't know, the college has been working on it for about 20 years.
More than that since 1960.
Is the dock going to go in the same place, the replacement?
Yeah, it's going to go in the exact same place. We'll probably start out with a longer ramp up to the fixed pier catwalk because we have to be above the tidal marsh four feet. So it's going to be different, but it's going to be similar. It'll be a nice dock that will last a long time. This dock is old, it's in poor shape, the house has been fixed. If you remember, this house was hammered by, I don't remember whether it was Superstorm Sandy or Irene.
Sandy was the one that got the most damage in there.
And McLaughlin's house next door, also the same thing. The houses have been raised, things have been improved over there, but their dock is 50 years old.
Yeah, the existing dock as it is is going to be completely removed and it's going to be raised up and light penetrating decking applied to the surface so that all the vegetation can revegetate underneath the area. So that's a good part of the project too, because it's a heavily vegetated shoreline along there.
It'll protect the wetlands vegetation better. So that's, I'll report back to Henry over.
I'm at the handrails, I'd like to report the handrails.
The handrails, let me see.
We don't have plants.
Ed, we worry about the handrails another time.
All right.
You don't have to explain to me what the Board of Trustees would like with handrails. We've been down this road plenty of times.
Well, can you submit a revised, I guess, submit a revised cover sheet, and at the next work session we'll go with that and submit handrails that would be...
I don't think handrails are going to be a big problem for Henry.
Yeah.
We're going to hold it, yes, most definitely.
All right.
Yep, and one thing I'd say, with not approving or looking at a float and a cap, and a ramp, which usually gets put on the wetlands and destroys them during the wintertime, this will be even a better project.
Yeah, I think it's a fine idea. A drop catwalk will get people into their boats from a regular low-profile fixed pier catwalk. If the guy wants a mooring, he can approach the trustees and ask for a mooring permit.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
So we're going to hold it until we get revised plans.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, you have 31 Allison Lane.
Yeah. First call still. 31 Allison Lane LLC, 31 Allison Lane Hampton Bears. Is there anybody here to discuss this application now? Not, I'd like to hold it over to see if the applicant or the consultant would be coming to the meeting. All right.
Trustee Walker.
188 Redwood, 188 LLC, 188 Redwood Road in Sag Harbor. This is a modification and a renewal. And I'm going to... Hi, how are you?
Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm Josh Schwartz, I'm the owner of the property.
Good, thanks for being here, Mr. Schwartz.
And if there's a sign sheet there, can you please...
So Nick, can you bring up the cover sheet? Because are you here with your agent?
Yeah.
Yes?
Here with Jane Costello and Chuck Hamilton.
Okay, good. So do you want to describe the scope of work and just sort of maybe give a little bit of history and I will find the plans to share? Oh, that's great, thanks for pulling up.
So first, thanks for letting us be here, I appreciate it.
Of course.
I spoke to you about a month or so ago. I wanted to, I got in touch with Ann because, so this has been going four years. I came to you early in 2019. The long and short of it is there's uncontrolled erosion on the neighboring property. And we had initially come to you asking for a 16-foot extension to an existing bulkhead return. About a year later, yeah, I guess one year later, I called Jack Costello, I said, "You should come look at this because I don't think 16 feet's going to be enough." He came and looked, and he didn't think, he agreed. So we came back to you guys asking to extend it to 24 feet. You approved it. We eventually went through the powers that be, ended up in Sag Harbor last, I guess, a year ago June. The long and short of this is that we had to revise the plan. We went through, I think, nine iterations with the Harbor Committee and ended up with, you know, what you guys have in front of you. That was a year ago. And I'll just say, Chuck can speak to this better, but I think I understand the situation, which is that the neighboring property has lost somewhere between 40 to 60 feet, depending on the spot on the shoreline. There is, there was, you know, shoreline erosion everywhere in the area, but then this, there was a specific spot next to me, which was, I would call it uncontrolled. And, you know, to the extent I don't do anything, I'm going to lose my property. And so we are here to answer any questions, but the bottom line is that I called, I called the office basically saying, "I need some help. This is, I'm kind of trapped, this is four years of going through this, trying to do the right thing and just protect the property," but I'm sure you guys can appreciate that. It's kind of distressing because, you know, it's gotten into upland areas, which when the water hits it, it's like soup, it disappears. The tidal marsh and the intertidal marsh are completely gone. So I have put some coral logs in which have, you know, held up because otherwise I think I would have lost, I've lost about five feet on the south property line. I think if I didn't do that, it'd have been much, much worse. But, and I've got lots of pictures to show you, but any questions? I think that's probably the better way to go about it unless you guys want me to address something else.
So the original, just to recap, the original proposal that came in was for a 24-foot extension to the return on the bulkhead in order to protect Mr. Schwartz's property. And when you went before the Harbor Committee, they were not in favor of new bulkhead. So their proposal is for a retaining wall with an additional rock revetment in front of it. So in speaking with James about this, James Dury, our environmental analyst, the question was if we approve, whether we approve the whole thing, both the retaining wall and the revetment, because technically the retaining wall is not within our jurisdiction, but it's part of the project.
So it's part of the project, it's all integral.
Yeah, so that's, and this is the way that the Harbor Committee approved it, and it all works together in order to preserve both.
Can I say one thing about that tonight?
Of course.
So as I recall, there was an issue, you know, we wanted to go higher on the rock revetment.
Higher?
Yeah, in terms of the height of it.
Right.
I live there, I see what goes on. It's my view that, I'm not sure how that protects the property, to be honest with you. You know, but that's what they want, all right? This is what the design was. So the need for that wall and the rock, that was the need for the wall. Because I think that there's a good shot, you know, we're going to plant, we're going to do all this planting on top of, in that one area between the rock and the retaining wall there, yeah, you can see. But, you know, we'll see if it holds.
So the planting is what will...
Hopefully hold.
Yes, it'll take a little while. It usually takes two to three years for the root system to develop and for it to be firmly, but that will hold there. So I hear what you're saying, and it's meant...
Look, I know I will replant and all, and, you know, we have the, I have a pretty solid, you have pictures of the buffer. I don't know if you, can I just show you these?
Yep, you can just, if you just give them to Jessica at the end, then she can stamp them and pass them down.
This is the total approved plan from the Harbor Committee.
Yes.
So this will be completely synced with them and entirely integral, so we should probably...
Go with it, yep. I just wanted to make sure you guys were all good.
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Is the retaining wall tied into the...
I don't know what this is.
It's the approval from the planning.
Into the other wall, the retaining wall tied into the bulkhead?
Jane, do you want to, is the retaining wall tied into the bulkhead?
How is it going to tie? There's like a little crust piece, there's a gag to it.
Okay, so it is tied?
It is tied, yes.
That needs to be done?
Yeah, so this wall in itself is what we refer to as a cut wall. There's no traditional backing system, there's no front piling, so the wall will just be vibrated in. So there's no disturbance or most minimal amount of disturbance to the land, landward side of the wall.
Right.
But it's there definitely to shore up that property. And then the extra rock in front really was more for wave reflection.
Yeah.
And then the planting was the part of the living shoreline that they wanted to save.
Is the height of the retaining wall the same height as the bulkhead or...
It is, yes. It's like 3.2, it's not very high.
No, and they won't let you raise it up at all?
We're not raising it, no. And then in addition to the existing buffer, which I think is about 30 feet, he's going an additional 20 feet with that non-disturbance buffer. Landward, if you see in that hashed area, he's giving up. So there's going to be a total of 50 feet non-disturbance buffer on this property. It's almost like 35% of his property is going to be a buffer.
Right, so that's all behind the work zone here then?
Yeah, exactly.
So it provides significant stability, but Ed, you had a couple of questions?
Yeah, the rock wall that's currently there and you're asking to, you know, basically, what is the elevation above mean-high water?
It's at mean-high water.
It's at mean-high water. So that, those rocks are placed there primarily just to break up the wave energy, and then you're going to incorporate a, basically a break, a retaining wall or a bulkhead behind it. Now that bulkhead, is it going to, how is it going to be driven into the ground? And how deep is it going to penetrate? Because if those rocks somehow give away or they get washed out, is it going to be like freestanding of the rocks to withstand? Because I'm familiar with the area down there very much, and on a southwesterly wind, usually after a southeastern, which you have an extreme high tide, you're going to get extreme wave action there. So I'm just making sure that the application that you're doing behind the rocks is going to be put in in a way that, you know, if it gets scoured out in front, that it was going to be able to withstand that.
Right, and that's the whole purpose of the wall itself versus just doing a pure rock revetment. You know, with a rock revetment, it would have been hard to integrate a living shoreline that was actually being flushed on it.
So you're taking the rocks to support up the toe of the bluff, and then you're making a platform for a living shoreline, and you incorporate a basically bulkhead retaining wall afterwards for further protection of the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, sorry, maybe that wasn't clear.
No, I just want to put it on the record.
This is the same view as that other one.
And just to be clear, Nick, would you mind pulling up the area, the overhead again? Just to be clear, so this is a bulkheaded property that abuts a natural shoreline to the south. South, southeast.
This is your property when you initially had done the bulkhead, correct?
That's the, yeah, that's...
And now this is the property after it has been in for a while, and the grass has grown, and basically the shoreline or meadow is completely obliterated.
That's a marsh, that's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's as tough as you can get around a marine environment without putting rocks or something in, that's very durable. And that's all, it looks like it's all washed out here.
And if you look at the other picture, there's a before and after, yeah.
Well, I have these two here, and it's very telling.
We might have to go back to the microphone.
Yeah, because you have a bulkhead here and it's in the construction phase, and then you have it finished with the plantings on there, and then the meadow is completely gone.
Can I just say one thing? And again, this is just, so again, it's four years, I'm just trying to, you know, be safe.
Yes.
Those other pictures show, you know, they're...
Did you number them?
No.
Okay, so there's a before and after?
On each one. And you'll see, you know, there's a, I think you see why there's uncontrolled erosion. There are things that, you know, are there and then not there. And, you know, the root systems that were there are gone, and that just created, you know, in an upland area, it just disappeared over the course of the last few years. This is the nature of why I came, you know, why we extended the request. And, you know, to be frank with you, you know, we wouldn't have been back if the thing would have been built if there was an approval of that extension of the bulkhead return.
We understand. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Costello or...
No, I need joint property, there's nothing to protect it from washing up further and further and further.
So I do want to let you know, just because it hasn't gotten to you yet, but we've been working with the southern neighbor on doing a restoration project.
Great.
That all came back during the time we were working with the Harbor Committee and realized that, you know, that's where the real problem is. And so with Chuck Hamilton's help, we're doing basically a living shoreline proposal. And we've gone three months of going back and forth with the Harbor Committee. Finally, we've gotten a plan that we're ready to present to the rest of the governing agencies. So it's something that's forthcoming in front of you, probably in another month, to try to stop that property from further erosion.
And that's planting and some sort of...
There's going to be some rock sill planting, bringing in some, yeah, it's pretty extensive as far as the planting plan. I have a preliminary drawing if you want to see it, or you can wait. I mean, I can hand this out, that's fine.
Nick, you should wait.
I mean, you can give it to our environmental analyst, and we could look at it, but we're not going to do any comments until you have a formalized application.
Right, right, it's more just to let you know that the neighbor is going to start doing something.
No, that's good information, thank you.
So the hope is that we don't have to keep extending and extending Mrs. Schwartz's return.
I just say one thing about that. So, yeah, I went to the neighbor, this, over the course of the years of this transpiring. So the reason that, you know, when I'm not just sitting here and saying, "Oh, I'm not going to worry about this or whether you approve it or not, you know, he'll come in and fix the thing," is because initially I would say there was no interest in resolving this, you know, not on my part. Then I think there's some greater awareness of what...
Can you speak into mine, please?
Sorry, there's some greater awareness of, you know, what's been transpiring now. So I think now I can say with confidence that at the moment there's a true intent to resolve this. But I don't think that I can sit here and, you know, and just rely on that, you know, that... But it is the situation, you know, what you suggested, like if nothing's done, and eventually this will go back to the road, you know. Like, it's, so, but, yeah, that's the reason for me not waiting and, you know, and just saying, "We'll see what happens."
Okay. Normally, in a living shoreline situation, it's best if several homes all get on the same page. That way they all have the similar type of protection, and none has more or less, and it usually works out better for the environment too.
I agree. So hopefully that's what, you know, will end up. But, you know, just for full disclosure, when I went in front of the Harbor Committee, you know, that was the idea. But as I said, I can't force somebody to do something.
Well, living shoreline is kind of a new concept too, so you have to take that into consideration. And you have to be working with the agencies because it's, some of them haven't dealt with this yet. So it's new for them, and it's kind of new for our board too.
I meant in terms of, you know, I can't, I can't force another property.
No, you can't.
Right.
No, that's, that's...
We got to deal with this application.
Yep, okay.
No, we appreciate you all being here.
Thanks for taking time.
Unless anyone has any additional concerns or questions, I would like to move this forward.
I'd like to recognize Chuck Hamilton, former DEC.
Do you want to speak, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, we should have asked that.
Thanks, you guys recognized me.
Yes, well, you bring decades of knowledge to...
I was trying to holler back at you. I feel how you... Good, Chuck, how are you? Hi, Boyd, good to see you, you guys are doing a great job, so I appreciate all you're doing. You know, I retired 11 years ago, and I wasn't doing any consulting work, but some people needed some help on some designs and things like that, so I got back into consulting work. So I kind of do state and federal permits, I don't do town permits, but I had a close relationship with the Southham Trustees, South Old Trustees, and Eastham. So it's an honor to actually come back here and speak before you guys. But, you know, Josh hired me because he had some critical issues on this property. And I looked at it, and it was my first time I ever met with the Harbor Committee, and it was an experience dealing with them and working with them to get this to a solution. But the one thing I did here, and I have a copy of my report, but it in analysis, the shoreline of the western shoreline of Redwood Cove, and what I was amazed at was the, when you actually look at it, the whole intertidal marsh area has disappeared in the last 20 years there. And as we know, that's our marine bulkhead, we've lost that. And I, you know, when I was shocked, and I actually did the pictures twice because I couldn't believe it, this property just south of Josh, Josh lost about eight to 12 feet of the intertidal marsh. 192 Redwood, which is, Mr. Spiegel, lost 34 to 57 feet of intertidal marsh. And then it hit the high, then it hit the high marsh, it was really a sponge. And guess what, it just went like soup. So we are going to come back with a design, and I agree, you know, totally with Trustee Warner, that when you do these projects, they've got to be a joint project and things like that. But as I told the committee, we really got, look, we need to look at that whole western shoreline, say, "What can we do to redo it?" So I'm glad before the board who's really, it's your property, it's kind of your wetlands, and maybe we can look at some jointly and get these homeowners involved because before you know it, that whole marsh is going to go along. It's a beautiful marsh, great area, and it's just a shame to see it. So I look forward to coming back before the board and all the regulatory agencies as we work away, giving knowledge about living shorelines, and it's the way of the future. And I think, I agree, it's 100% the way of the future in the way that we did it, which is, you know, bulkhead armor, revetments, I think this is the way of the future, you know, resiliency and civil rights. So I thank you for your encouragement, and happy holidays and happy new year. Good seeing you.
Thank you, Chuck, so much for those words. Okay, so I'd like to advance that.
Do we have stamp plans?
What's that?
Are there stamp plans?
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
Well, I'll reach out, I'll reach out and get them. We'll, we'll need...
She's right there, we can tell her.
Jane. We'll need stamped plans in order to have it move forward. So if you could just get those to us, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next is Sag Road. This is 531 Sagaponic Road. This is a modification to the original, it's not a modification to the permit, it's a modification to the original plan. Nick, oh, you're here, hi. Susanna, if you just...
Grab the signing sheet. Let me sit there, over there, okay.
So you remember that Susanna came before us on this couple meetings ago, and we, and she noticed that the tree was in the way? So this is just moving the whole structure so that you don't have to take down a mature tree, which is, I think, a sole tree on that location. Susanna, if you want to expand on that though?
Yeah, so the last time we were here, we came in shifting it towards the southern property line, but we shifted it too far because as you extend the property line out into the water, we were getting too close to that. So we've revised the plan and resubmitted a couple of weeks ago showing that the whole structure moved up to the north so that the...
The extension of the property line isn't...
Right, we showed the extension, and we're 10 feet off of that with the structure. The reason we put it originally farther south is because there's a more narrow strip of wetland vegetation. So in order, in the new location that we're proposing now, we need to extend the catwalk about three feet, three or six feet.
But not significant? There's not a significant change here? But it does now conform to the extension of the property line? Nick, can you shift it just a little bit to the north?
Keep going.
There it is.
Right, so the property lines had a really odd, if you go down a little bit more, you can see it. The property lines had a really odd angle relative to the shoreline, so...
Yeah.
So now it works, we're achieving the same goal, we're missing the tree, we're 10 feet off the property line, and, I'm sorry, we extended the catwalk six feet in order to make it over the slightly wider band of vegetation there.
Right, all the way up at the, basically the mouth of Sag Pond. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Susanna?
I spoke the last time, so good with it now.
Yeah.
The last time.
If not, I'd like to, are those plans stamped? Susanna, that would be the one thing.
Okay, we'll get those stamped, and I need to revise the cover letter with the request for the decision.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So I'll get those back to you.
Perfect, okay, great.
That'll work.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Parish.
Yes, we have Six Holly Realty LLC, Six Holly Lane, Rensselaer. Good morning, Bill.
Good.
Billy Knod, First Coastal.
Yeah, I do, yeah, when we get done, Bill's up.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Billy?
Billy, can you pull that mic back a little?
Sure. How's that? So this is Six Holly. Pretty straightforward dock in Fish Creek.
We have a question on the property. Is there 10 feet from the property lines, does the dock exist?
Yeah, so there's an existing dock there that is not necessarily conforming. So we're looking to bring this into conformance and keep the dock. This is a right-of-way that's, I think it's about 50 feet wide, or it's a flat, it's a reverse flaglot is really what it is. So it's not a right-of-way. It's an actual property's, you know, connection to the water. And that we have a proposed 46-foot dock with a 12-foot ramp and then a 6-by-20 float and mooring piles off of that. So you can see that existing dock is a little too close to the southern property line. So we're kind of exactly lining the new dock up, so it centers in the property, and reducing the width of it as well, and putting a 6-by-20 float, not whatever that is there now.
You then have 10 feet on both sides of it?
We'll have 10 feet on both sides.
And what is the water depth at the site?
Get, it goes from 2.9 to 2.4 as it straddles the float.
So it's literally right, right on the...
Right on that edge, yeah. I mean, it's, it's as compressed as we can get it to keep that two and a half foot, and it gets off the property line. The other properties have a little more space for boating, but we did want to center this on...
And you also don't want it to be too far out into the...
That's a tight spot, yes. Exactly.
And it's fine with the 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, right?
Yes.
As far as...
Yeah, the width there is 250 feet.
Okay.
So we've got plenty of space.
Plenty of space, yeah. It's hard to tell.
We noted that on the plan. All materials are compliant, and no treated material through floor decking.
I think you have to put that in the application, don't you?
On the cover sheet?
On the cover sheet.
Or on the plans?
Sit there now.
So I don't have a scale for you, scale. Well, it's a 50-foot wide flaglot, so it should...
So it should be fine, because it's 20 feet?
It's 20 feet.
The flood...
Yeah, it's in the center, yeah.
So it should be like 15 feet on each side, right?
Yeah, I mean, oddly, it's working out perfectly to center it.
Actually, it looks like it was made for this.
Want to look at it?
Sure.
It fits just about.
It's a jigsaw puzzle.
Right. Well, with the depth and pulling it back as close as we can, it seems to work.
We've dealt with easements and all kinds of stuff on Fish Creek for the time I've been on the board. Some of them went to litigation for a couple of years.
Litigation.
Yeah, when we first got on the board, yeah.
Yeah, this seems to be the best way to fit it, and it complies.
It looks like the only way.
The only way.
The davit that's noted here, is that, do you need electric for that?
I think it's just a hand crank. No.
Okay. Maybe there might need to be, just say that, that it's, that it's manual operated, so that there's no electrical.
We got to go someplace else for that permit.
Yeah. Which is pretty much stated in the...
Mark, you good?
You can submit an updated cover sheet?
Sure.
And also stamp plans.
Yep. Okay, good, good.
Anyone have any other questions?
Thank you. I think I've got another, so I'll see you guys in a minute or two. Actually, you did see the other one that was in your...
Yeah, you can have to go over that.
I skipped over you one here, so we're going to do that last.
You have the bottom one with you?
I have the bottom one.
What do we have now?
Well, we got Neil Griffin.
Stay back for later.
14 Cricket Path, Rensselenberg.
14 Cricket Path, Rensselenberg.
Yes, good morning. Dan Hall, Land Use Ecological Services. This project is 14 Cricket Path and Rensselenberg, Mr. Griffin, and he is proposing to fill in the existing boat slip on his property. It's kind of a unique situation. The boat slip is underneath the home, so it's been causing a lot of detriment and excessive moisture on the house. So he's chosen to fill it in and reconstruct the bulkhead along the property. We provided the 10-foot wide non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer behind it. There's a walkway along most of the property, four foot wide, I believe. It's supposed to be reconstructed. You know, the fills will be from an upland source, approximately 500 cubic yards. The methodology for this will be that they'll build the bulkhead to close off the boat slip first, and then they can backfill under the house with a small machine, a bulkhead or something.
Do you have any photos of this as part of the files? I'm familiar with this property, and this is a boathouse that was probably built in the 20s or 30s?
Yes, I made photographs.
So the whole structure is built around the boat slip under the house.
Correct.
The house is elevated approximately, I don't know, 15 or 20 feet. So...
But you didn't want to fill it in.
Have you talked to anybody else about this yet?
Well, we have the approval from the DEC, the Army Corps and Department of State.
You do?
Yes.
That's interesting.
They're filling in property, not, you know, they're using favor of this.
Really?
Yeah.
And where does the material come from? Can you do this?
Comes from off-site. Approved, clean fill from off-site location.
Are you going to leave the old bulkhead in there, or is it going to take it out?
I believe they're going to leave it there. I think it just causes less disturbance if they left it there. It'd be kind of hard to pull it out. They'd have to move the house up higher to get the equipment in there to remove the bulkhead.
They're going to...
How's that going to de-water?
I don't know how it's going to de-water. They're going to have to de-water.
Well, they do it at low tide. They can close it off, so there's minimal water in there, and then you start filling it in.
Yeah, but, you know, when it rains and tide comes up...
Well, it's going to be a bulkhead going across.
Yeah, but if I ever get a storm, it's like, it's like a...
Sponge.
It's like a sponge. It's all that water, it's not going to go out. It's going to go right in that one space. You're going to have more.
Are you talking about what's the bulkhead in?
Yeah.
Well, they could remove some of the sheathing, that's what I said.
Yeah, that way it can drain out.
Well, I mean, it looks like the bulkhead is actually supporting the foundation of the house.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, this is an engineering task, has to be, you know, thought about through the whole process. I mean, I'm assuming the pilings that are here, that the house, holding up the roof and everything, have been driven in the ground with, you know, as a load-bearing piling to hold the structure. So I mean, I'm assuming you have this all engineered, so...
Well, the pilings can remain. Yeah.
No, but the pilings actually hold the roof.
The house up. That's structural component of the house, yes.
So that was engineered originally, right?
I believe so, yes.
You have the bulkhead on the outside, and you almost need something, or you need to definitely remove some of the inside bulkhead for that moisture to...
Disappear.
Displaced.
No, it's, I mean, like a...
A swamp, yeah, like a swamp.
Because this is a fairly new bulkhead.
Yeah, it's going to be there for 50, 60 years, Ann.
But the one that's here, here, is a fairly new bulkhead.
It's almost watertight when it's...
It's all watertight.
When you use a tongue and grew the corrugated vinyl with the tongue and grew, it's almost watertight.
Yeah, so when that gets full of water, when it drains, it's going to drain right into the water table.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not going to disappear.
Well, at the very least, they could just drill holes in the sheathing.
Yeah, I was going to say drilling holes in the sheathing. I guess...
I mean, make some weep holes type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, you're getting engineering stamped plans, so they'll, you know, they'll wrangle with that when they cross that bridge.
They're going to have to get it to drain.
Yeah.
Because it might make more moisture down there.
It shouldn't, if it's done with clean sand and it has the proper mechanisms.
Drainage, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the sheathing's not going to be doing any, I mean, the bulkhead's not going to be doing any structural support anymore as far as the sheathing goes. So they can drill it and remove it, too.
It could come out, I would think so.
Still going to have moisture. Because it's going to pull in like a sponge, and it's going to...
It's a very unique situation here. I can never, seeing this being approved, but seeing that you have it, I would never want to give it up.
No.
Clean boat and a little garage and not have to worry about it.
Right.
I think just over time, it just causes more concern than pleasure.
I'm good with it.
Good to advance it?
Yeah.
Pending stamp plans, because do you have those?
We have stamp plans.
We have stamp plans.
Okay.
So it's good.
To go then.
Page Dietrich.
All right. Thank you. Have a nice holiday season, everybody.
Good night, you.
Thank you.
We have 114 June Avenue in Flanders. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kate Rumel with Coal Environmental. We just have a pretty standard bulkhead replacement, and the client is looking to raise his bulkhead a foot. The bulkhead next...
We inspected this, didn't we, with you?
Yes, yeah.
James Duryan this summer?
Yes. Yeah, we met on site. So the bulkhead, if you're looking at the plans, the bulkhead to the left is slightly higher than our client's. And then he just wants to raise it a foot, and he'll go straight across. Right now, he has a bit of an indent, and so he's just going to go straight across right there. It's kind of like a retaining wall. But just in place with a final bulkhead.
So I'm sorry, Kate, you said the bulkhead to the west is slightly higher, and then the bulkhead to the north, or the one on the corner?
The one on the corner is going to need replacement relatively soon. And then the one just north of that is actually, is slightly higher and has been replaced relatively recently. So the one in between our clients and that one to the north will need to be replaced at some point in the near future. Yeah, that one, that they arrows on.
Right. And then you're raising the height of the subject property to meet the adjoining bulkhead to the west, or above?
It'll be slightly higher. So theirs is currently 5.37, and we're looking to be 5.7.
Couple inches here.
Yeah. It's not significant.
Well, after Sandy, this whole entire area was inundated with feet of, literally a couple feet of water.
Yep.
So it's appropriate to, you know, 2022, raising it up to our standards. This bulkhead was probably originally put in in the 80s.
It's pretty old.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one return that's existing?
Yes. And he's looking to put in a second return as well.
Isn't that return, is that where the big tree was on the corner of the property?
Yes.
How are you going to deal with the tree?
Well, we're going to try to preserve, you know, all vegetation we can, but it might not be possible, since it's, yeah, right on the corner.
Do you have pictures that are, that you took, Kate?
Some right there.
Nick, are there more pictures that, yeah?
Just this one. Yeah, to the left on that picture, you see the tree, yeah.
Yeah, they should be able to go around that.
Okay. Yeah, on the, on the plans, we have noted that the vegetation's to be preserved to the maximum possible.
You have to mark the tree and go around it.
Okay.
Stamp it.
They should be able to do that.
Yeah.
And you're going to do some dredging, too?
Yes, 10 feet in front of the bulkhead, and we'll just use that as backfill.
And what about a buffer?
Yep, 10-foot buffer with some low-line natives.
10-foot wide native, non-fertilized, dependent vegetated buffer to be installed.
It's perfect in that area.
Four-foot wide path through the buffer. James and I went there this summer, and it looked pretty good.
Call the macroalgae. Yes, Eli, a lot of macroalgae. Tons of it.
Yeah.
Seems okay, huh? You good?
Yep.
You're good?
I'm good.
Everybody's good?
Great.
That should be fine, project.
Easy peasy.
You just need stamp plans for that one.
Not stamp?
Yeah, we need stamp plans.
Stamp plans, okay.
Yep, that's...
Thanks, Kate.
Finals require the stamp.
No problem. When do you need those by?
Before the resolution.
Okay, just before...
Our next meeting.
Yeah. But I mean, there's no, like, day before is fine, or?
Well...
Usually the Wednesday before.
Wednesday before, perfect.
Yeah, give us some time. Not the last minute.
Not the day of.
You have to include that there's no tree that would...
No, okay.
All right. Now we're to 541 Main Street in Quayag.
Hello, Billy Mack again, the applicant.
Bill, before you start, we had received an email from the neighbor at 545 claiming that they have the right-of-way. Pass this down. Actually, I'm going to read it into the...
This is the boathouse and...
This is the boathouse. We went and did an inspection on the handle.
Okay. So this, what you're about to read in then is pertaining to the easement over the property? Is it easement, right of plan?
The return, there's a return in the corner, and there's a right-of-way.
Yes.
And the letter of the email is dated December 1st. Dear James and trustees, I'm writing in regards to the application by the owners of 541 Main Street in Quayag to raise the height of their bulkhead on Fontuck Bay, which my wife and I just saw discussed last night on the video replay of the trustees' work session, working session of November 21st. We are the owners of 545 Main Street, which my wife's family has owned since 1970, and which holds the right-of-way discussed during the meeting, and which crosses property owned by 541. I'm writing to first correct an error made unintentionally, I'm sure, by the representative of 541 Main Street to the trustees in his presentation, and secondly, to express our concern that raising of the bulkhead as discussed during the work session could potentially obstruct our pedestrian right-of-way. On the error, during the work session, one of the trustees asked the representative of 541 Main, who owned the dock at the end of their right-of-way. He responded, "541." This is incorrect. The agreement establishing the right-of-way, unfilled with the town, makes clear that the maurer property, M-A-U-R-E-R, at 545 is responsible for the building and maintenance of the dock, which must adhere to particular dimensions, et cetera, enumerated in the agreement. Insofar as this context impacts any aspect of the application, we wanted the trustees to have accurate information. On the issue of potential obstruction of the right-of-way, from our understanding of the plans, the proposed new higher bulkhead could potentially obstruct the right-of-way in two places. The first, where it traverses the right-of-way on the south end of the property in a perpendicular fashion. The second place is where the dock currently meets the bulkhead. A raised bulkhead at either point could obstruct clear and safe pedestrian use of the right-of-way and/or access to the dock itself. While it was difficult to tell from the plans on the video broadcast, it did not appear that there were any structural design changes proposed, stairs, et cetera, that would mitigate the potential obstruction. There are two other issues we'd suggest to the trustees and the owners of 541 Main consider. The first is the impact of a raised bulkhead on rainwater drainage into the bay from the west. Historically, during heavy rains, water has drained down the slope from the main street to the bay, sometimes pooling significantly on the Butler Kittle, Kitty and Fiedler properties. A raised bulkhead, particularly at the south end of the 541 property, could further impede the natural drainage back into the bay. While this might temporarily impact access to the right-of-way, the more serious concern would be to the homeowner... the more serious concern would be to the homeowners mentioned above, including the applicants. As the butlers can confirm, the primary drainage pathway to the bay is down the right-of-way towards the beach area on the south end of the 541 property. As recent purchasers, the current 541 Main owners may not be aware of this flooding risk or have seen the way water, the way pooled water drains across the property. Their neighbor Brad Butler has video of how severe the flooding from rainwater as opposed to bay water can be where it flows. Lastly, the easement agreement simply states, simply states that we have a right to launch a boat and to pull our dock onshore during the winter on the south end of the property, referred to in the hearing as the beach and the overgrown natural areas along the bay. Our understanding is that the proposed, the proposal currently doesn't ask the trustees to approve an extension of the bulkhead along this beach area in a way that would impede our ability to launch a boat or to store our docks onshore as we have many times over the years. But we'd appreciate confirmation of this from the town and generally a review of the 541 Main obligations under the easement agreement before approval. It's our hope that no impediment would be added to the natural slope of the shoreline where no bulkhead currently exists. Further context that may be helpful. The previous owners of 541 Main, Paula Fiedler, made a specious claim of constructive abandonment in an effort to terminate the right-of-way. After years of litigation and considerable expense, a court roundly rejected her arguments, affirmed the right-of-way and required Fiedler to remove a significant number of trees and other obstructions. So while we are not at all unreasonable or obstructionist, the agreement that any issues are resolved amicably and through discussion. In this case, we only learned of the proposal, the proposed changes through a chance glance at the broadcast of the town working session on local cable TV. So have not had an opportunity to raise our concerns. So in the meantime, we ask the trustees to please consider the issues raised above before approving the application to alter the bulkhead and/or ask for changes to the design to accommodate the concerns raised above. We'd be happy to answer questions and to discuss by phone or in person. Many thanks. Warren St. John.
Thanks for reading that, Bill. And I haven't seen it. But they, they're correct. They do have a right-of-way over this property with rights to the dock and the beach access. So the dock will remain and we'll make any accommodations so they can get access to it if we have to add a step or any kind of thing that we need to. The owners of this property, 541, are obligated to do that and they will do that. Though we'll also, their other concern was to make sure that we leave that beach access unbulkheaded and not touched. And that is not even proposed to do anything there. So I think we're pretty compliant with all their concerns.
Is there a copy of the easement in the upper mid?
It is not.
I think that should be put in there to talk file.
No, I think it should be put in this or attorney can look at it.
Right, exactly.
It's gotta be having a chance.
Yeah. Mark, you gotta look at all this stuff.
Yeah, any of that stuff should be reviewed before we.
Go any further.
Further, go further, Billy.
I agree with you on that.
That's easy.
Yep, it's gotta be looked at.
What about the flooding concerns?
Well, the flooding concerns, the bulkhead ends, I think it's somewhere around 50 feet. No, it's 30 feet and plus a little bit more. So maybe it's about 35 feet from the, their right-of-way. It's about five feet, it ends from their right-of-way, which is about 30 feet wide. And, and then there's an adjacent property to the south. And that bulkhead there, that's a bulkheaded piece of property. So, you know, the flooding impacts, you know, the additional 18 inches, I couldn't imagine would make any difference to anybody there.
So Aram mentioned last time that NOAA has water modeling, models that can be run. Perhaps we could do that for this property so that we're out in front of this concern because these neighbors have a significant history.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, that would be helpful.
Sure, okay.
If we could do that.
Yeah, yeah, we could certainly do that. I know during floodstorms, that bulkhead gets overtopped as well as everybody else's.
But they specifically say not bay flooding, but rain.
Rain.
And there, there is a video that one of the property owners has that maybe we can ask to have them send to us so we could see just how flooded it is. I mean, I know it's upland out of our jurisdiction.
Right.
But if we put something on the bay that's in our jurisdiction that causes problems somewhere else, you know, it's.
Yeah, I think what they are referencing is that southern part of this property that is unbulkheaded that gets the outwash or whatever we're gonna call it.
Runoff?
Runoff, yeah. So I, you know, it's hard to determine the impact of this bulkhead on that section that is unbulkheaded. I would imagine it's not gonna impact it, but be happy to review any aspect of this.
Anything we could to.
Yeah, well, I'll ask Aram to work on that NOAA modeling. I know that they do have that available. And we'll get your copy of the deed.
Okay.
And the easement.
Yeah, this way, this way Mark can review that.
Cool. All right.
Great. And maybe we can ask for the video, right? James can ask for the video if we.
Yeah, if you guys get it, we'd love to see it.
Oh, okay. Whoever, yeah, just CC the other one, just so that we look, take a look at that, because that would be helpful.
If we could put it on for the next work session, maybe we can make, somehow put it on the.
Maybe we need to speak to Highway. You know, maybe if they get some drainage issue that's further up, maybe there's some grants available or something to catch some water, some rainwater. So maybe we have to have a conversation with Highway.
That's in the village of.
It's quiet. Town is out there.
It's town.
But the, if we could get a copy of that letter that the neighbor sent to, I just wanna make sure we address all of their concerns.
That'd be, that'd be good.
Good.
Send an extra copy to Hampton.
Should we stamp it in and give it to him?
You stamp it?
Not if we give it to him.
Okay, I'll just give. Here.
Whatever is easiest.
That's easy.
Yes.
Pop the foil.
No, it's, it's good to address your concerns, yeah.
You have one more?
Yeah.
Yep, 31 Allison Lane LLC, 31 Allison Lane Hampton Bears with First Coastal.
Billy Mack, First Coastal for the applicant. This you guys have seen. I think we updated the plan as you requested.
This is the marina, right?
This is the marina and he's, they're planning to replace a lot of wooden floating docks with these plastic poly dock fingers and, and sections.
So I know one of the concerns was the, at the marina, the, how far the boats were out into the Doug Canal.
To Foster's Creek.
Foster's Creek, yeah. This is the old Molnars Marina. The county has dredged the mouth of this canal, but not up inside where the proposed project is going on.
They stop before there.
Yes.
We did relocate that six-by-27-foot dock to be within the one-third line of the creek. So we brought that.
Yeah, that was the one concern that we.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that?
So on the north end, Billy?
Yes, I think that's exactly where that is.
Okay.
Six-by-27, yeah.
Okay.
So we, yeah, we tucked that in.
Historical, we at the historical.
And on the outside.
Boundaries?
On the outside, there's no boats there.
Everybody's pushing beyond the boundaries.
On the outside of the floats, are you gonna put boats there?
I'm not sure. I think it's a service dock, so they're, if they're there, they're.
There should be no boats on the outside tide, on there, on the other side, because that's gonna, that's gonna, you're right in the channel, right?
You're infringing on, you're infringing on the one-third.
They got boats on the outside.
You're gonna have the same trouble we have down in.
North side?
Yeah, by the, by our boat lamp where the guy doubles.
What's the dimensions, what are the dimensions there?
You mean how wide the canal is?
That, that one flo, oh, the dimensions of the canal?
Yeah.
It shows it.
It's a little wider there, but it's not very wide.
No, it's not.
You're gonna have to go on there.
It's 96 feet overall in that section.
From shoreline to shoreline or from end of?
From shoreline, yeah.
But, and on this case, with, so now in it, you have to go where the deep water is, where boats can travel up and north and south.
Yep.
You can't really go by.
Yeah, because they didn't dredge that far up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
Pretty tight up in there.
It's pretty tight, but it's pretty deep. Molnars has a, inside of their marina, it's, it hasn't been dredged in many years, but it is, still is pretty deep. And that area is, well, I mean, if you pull out with a GIS map, you can see it better. Yeah, I mean, it's, right now, moving that one dock over would allow for a little bit more width as far as navigation. But if that's a service dock, the one where the cursor is there, that should be basically just, you know, for, you know, transient dockage, not overnight and large boats, because that's where it does neck down there.
Is there gas there? Is that their gas dock?
I don't think there's fuel on this property.
I don't think there's fuel there. No, it's, it's too complicated for fuel docks now.
Right.
Yeah.
But other than that, historically, that's the way that, that has looked since the eighties.
Yeah, and we're improving it certainly by bringing it closer.
Well, you're getting rid of the treated lumber and all the other material out of there and you're using, you know, plastic floating docks.
Yeah, and then the treated material, a lot of that was creosote.
Yeah, so there's no expansion on the marina as it is. It's actually going, moving it back in the other direction.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what we asked for, so I'm okay with it as it's proposed right now.
Yeah, I'm fine too, as long as you put in that no overhead dockage on outside there.
No overnight dockage, yeah.
That's gonna be problematic.
Yes.
You mean if there are boats tied up overnight?
Well, there have.
Or to stipulate that.
Enforce it, the whole deal is gonna be.
Well, we'll see. We'll put it on there and we'll see how it's.
It's up to the Bay Constables and what people call.
Yeah, historically, it's been, you know, used intermittently. So I don't think there's any overnight that's been there. And we're certainly bringing into more compliance now.
With the shortage of boat slips in the area, you know, everybody's trying to push every.
Well, a lot of these docks, because of the function of the floating, were, they needed to be repaired so they can get the use out of them. So they're doing that by, you know, and in doing so, they're increasing the, you know, their availability to put in boats.
Now, is there any proposed lighting on any of these outside docks?
None that I know of.
As far as for safe navigation up and down?
We could, we can certain put us, like a solar beacon.
Yeah, but it would be a dark sky compliant light.
Yeah.
Not that the.
Navigation, yeah, exactly.
I'm all for safe navigation and being a lot of the boaters that we have in the community are new boaters. I wanna make it, make it safe for them.
And what's up at the head of that canal? Is that where Tony's?
No, that's the, no, this is Foster's.
Foster's Creek.
This is the one where the Poncork Manor or the old Allen's Acres resides.
The head of it, we have our little piece of property.
No, not here we don't have. This is Foster's.
Foster's, you're thinking of Smith, Smith's Creek is the.
No, I mean, no, this is, all the way up, you have the, you have the fishing station.
No, 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 that's, that's the next one.
Yeah, I think it's residential.
That's Penny. That's Penny Mine. Yeah, it's Penny.
This is the one with Stabelix Marina.
But this is heavily used canal.
It is.
Yeah.
Wanna make, we wanna make it as safe as possible and functional as possible. See the next one over.
I think you're good.
Yep.
Okay. I think you're good.
Now, we have stamp plans for this?
For this one, we do not.
Yeah, we can provide those. Just wanna make sure we're good.
Stamp plans and then we'll put it on for the next general meeting.
We're good?
Okay, very good. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Billy.
Moving right along.
Great holiday.
You too.
Take good care.
Let's go to the waterfowl hunting location permit applications for determination. You could go over there. I have Charles Decker and Justin J. sharing permit number 53, expired, non-renewed. It's my understanding they do not wish to maintain this spot, so it will go back to.
Go back to the waitlist?
Yes.
Okay. You spoke for them or you have something?
I spoke to.
Yes, they, they don't wanna renew.
Yes.
It's not being renewed.
Not being renewed. Okay.
And I had MICA permit number 227. I spoke to him and he wants not to renew it. He wants to go back to the waitlist.
Some of these spots are not. The greatest, obviously, that's why.
This one, 227 is, it's, I think it's too far from his house. And it's tough, like you say, you need a boat to get to it.
It's a long run, it's an access issue.
Yes.
Um, I would like to just bring it to the record, I'm sorry to interrupt that, for Mr. Muramovic, sorry. I did speak to him with Jessica again, reminding him he does need to submit an application to be put onto the waitlist again. So in case he does speak to anybody, anybody on the board, he does still need to submit a waitlist application in order to be back on the waitlist.
Yeah, we spoke with him, I think, on Thursday or Friday and he seemed to understand that.
Okay, so just watch for his letter.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then next we have George Valentino. He submitted a letter explaining why he was late. This is for Ed. His letter says, this is my first year with the spot. I didn't know what I had to do.
Okay, this is his first issue?
Yes.
I'm good, I'm good with giving it back to him then.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's a couple for trustee Parish.
Yeah, for trustee Parish. First up, we have Glenn S. Bullock. He did submit a letter saying like he has a late renewal.
And the other ones then?
And the other one is Daniel Sullivan. Trustee Parish, did you hear back from Daniel Sullivan?
No, I've left him a message last week on his voicemail, the number that was given. And we've not received any email or any callback.
Has anybody else spoken with him?
No. No. So I'm okay with taking the, Mr. Bullock and with his letter of explanation and renewing that. I'm fine with that. So.
Me too.
Um, for Daniel Sullivan, what would you guys like to do? Just because we are trying to close out the season.
No response, Bill?
No response.
No response.
So I gotta score on the waitlist.
Did you email him?
I mean, go on the.
Back to the waitlist.
Um, I did email those who did not renew yet.
Lot of it, yeah.
Um, back in October, I emailed them.
Has there been any correspondence from Rich Franks or any of the other Bay Constables on this blind location? Is it being hunted as, this year or there's?
I have heard no correspondence of the Bay Constables regarding anything about that blind spot.
Maybe we should just give him a call and see if it's even being hunted or, or the person has no interest in it at all, then we can just.
Even, even if it's being hunted, it's being hunted illegally.
No, that's why I'm bringing, Billy, that's why I'm bringing it up.
It should go, you know.
Yeah.
We'll send a list to the Bay Constables with all the people that didn't renew and make sure that no one's hunting those spots. The reason I haven't received that yet is because we've been, we have all these guys going on still, so.
I think the one in your area is a duck boat spot or something.
Yeah, yeah, he moved a duck boat.
Because it's a bit of a trap, he says, to even get to that thing.
Yeah.
For whose area?
Now, for trustee Pell's area, it's a bit of a challenging spot.
Trustee Parish.
Was a blind that he.
We're not gonna renew it, so.
Okay, we're gonna ban.
And we also have to make sure.
Thank you.
These ones were terminated, that the blinds are out of the space.
Right, yeah.
They did need the derelict, the blinds there.
Okay.
So give, give Bullock back his spot and the other one you're gonna return?
We're gonna advance for a non-renewal.
For Sullivan?
Okay.
He can call you back.
Nope, no, sorry, he's not interested.
All right, well, that concludes our work session for today. We do have an exec session at 10:30 that I see here relative to a DOT property acquisition discussion. So if there's nothing further for work session, I would make a motion to conclude the work session and, you know, adjourn the work session and go into exec session.
Second.
Second to trustee Pell. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.